If you will and enable, would you be kind enough to consider standing for the invocation? And I'll recognize Reverend David Riley from the Sacred Journey Hospice. And remain standing for the pledge if you would, please.
Let's pray together. We thank you, Lord, for this morning. We thank you for the blessings of life and the freedoms that we have in our country. We thank you, Lord, for this wonderful, beautiful fall day that we have and reminds us of all that we do have to be grateful for. We pray that you would bless this meeting and we thank you for those in leadership in our county, in our country, those who serve and the difference that they make. Lord, may you bless again this meeting and thank you again for all that you endow upon us. And this is our prayer in your name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 9:00 AM, Thursday, correction, Tuesday, November 1st, 2016, meeting comes to order. What I'd like to recommend for the council's consideration, I mean, the board's consideration, is to remove item 17A. Item 17A was a resolution approving the replacement of a fiber network located in the County Work Camp Road area, which is Philip Drive. And the reason we haven't pulled that, you don't know this, but we had a D under there that was a significant contract to do many, many, many things, software and hardware, throughout of our computer system. And we didn't feel comfortable with that one. So A was predicated on the savings that was realized in D. So consequently, if we took B off the board, which we didn't put it on the agenda, then obviously A has to come off as well. The second item, our fair chief is going to announce that she has approved a no ban burning. That means absolutely no burning in Henry County because of the drought. And she'll make a little presentation for that. And even though she has the authority to do that, I thought it'd be, and the county manager and I thought it'd be a good gesture if we announced it at this public meeting and the public would be aware that we're going to have no burn in the county. So if y'all would just make a note and amend the agenda and put that under the county manager's comment. So having said that, do we have any other commissioners that'd like to add or delete anything off the agenda? Here none? Does somebody move we approve the agenda as amended?
So move.
Have motion District 3?
Second.
Second, District 5, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Proclamation recognizing National Hospice and Palative Care Month.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners.
Good morning.
This morning, we have a proclamation in recognition of November as National Hospice and Palative Care Month. Whereas hospice and palliative care empowers those facing a serious or life-limiting illness to live as fully as possible, surrounded and supported by family and loved ones. And whereas hospice and palliative care professionals are dedicated to helping communities access quality end-of-life care and are committed to removing barriers to accessing that care. And whereas this service brings patients and family caregivers the highest quality delivered by a team of skilled professionals, including physicians, nurses, social workers, counselors, aides, spiritual care providers, and others who make the wishes of each patient and family a priority. And whereas through hospice caregiver training and assistance, patients are able to live more fully and make more meaningful moments until the end, surrounded and supported by the faces of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. And whereas every year, more than 1.65 million Americans living with life-limiting illness and their families received care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States. And whereas more than 430,000 trained volunteers contribute 19 million hours of service to hospice programs annually in the United States. And whereas hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones, and their health care professionals. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the month of November 2016 be known as Hospice Palliative Care Month and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. Signed by Chairman Tommy Smith and attested by County Clerk Stephanie Braun. And we have Jack Drawn with Sacred Journey Hospice and Pastor Dave Riley to accept this proclamation from you.
Okay. Thank you. McIntosh Trail Community Service Board update, Mr. Mike Hubbard. Greetings and salutations.
Good morning, Chairman, and good morning, Commission. I'm Mike Hubbard. I'm CEO with McIntosh Trail Community Service Board. First thing I want to do is thank the board for the long-term support that you've had over the years for McIntosh Trail. I've been with the McIntosh Trail Agency for 31 years and very much aware of the robust support that this county has provided to the Henry County Counseling Center, the developmental disability programs, and the peer support programs. I also wanted to recognize some staff members and board members that I brought this morning or that came. Susan Craig, our board chair is present. Many of you all know Susan. Kenyatta Walker, our clinical director, is to her left. And then Amy Kuhn is the Director of the Henry County Counseling Center. What I thought I would do this morning is give you a brief overview of the services that we offer for McIntosh Trail. We serve seven counties. Henry is our largest county. We also serve Spalding, Fayette, Butts, Lamar, Pike, and Upson. And I see...
Do I cue this up?
Just tap it. Wanted to share with you our vision. The vision of McIntosh Trail Community Service Board is promote and support community cultures in which those who have or experience disabilities are visible, valued, participating, and contributing Our mission, McIntosh Trail Community Service Board, is to offer individuals experiencing symptoms associated with mental illness, addictive disease, and/or developmental disabilities the hope for optimal functioning by providing quality behavioral health services and supports. These are our values that we practice. And I won't read all of those out to you, but you can see that we value the individuals that we serve. This is a copy of our board members, list of our board members representing all the counties. We presently, and it's not listed there, we have an opening on the Henry County Board for a board member position there. Our boards are made up of 51% either consumers or family members of consumers of services. Excuse me. And we also, as of 2014, with the passing of Senate Bill 349, which restructured the community service boards, we now can have an ex officio member, a public county commissioner or publicly elected official, make up one-third of our board. So Henry County, based on size, population, contribution, could appoint a public official to our board, as well as Spalding County and Fayette County, based on those parameters. This is how we are funded. We receive 59% of our funding from the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. Medicaid and Medicare make up 26%. We receive 3% contributions from the counties. And then we also collect private payers, from private payers. And then grants make up 2%. Our funding has gotten, has changed during the past year, during this past, beginning in July of this year, we went to a fee-for-service system, which means we no longer get block money from the state anymore. We submit encounters for the services that we provide, and then we are reimbursed once those services are submitted electronically. Another thing that I'll add, too, is the Medicaid and Medicare rates that we receive have not been changed in quite a few, many years and really do not cover what it costs to provide the services. So we have to diversify our payer mix and also look at other creative ways to create We have 291 full-time staff and 191 hourly staff through local staffing agency. These are the types of staff that we hire. Mental health professionals, most of these individuals are licensed. They have to be licensed in order for us to receive authorizations for services and We also, these are our core services.
Can I get some more?
These are our core services. Core services are the services that are offered in the counseling centers. We have six outpatient counseling centers. The only county that does not provide a counseling center is Pike County. And these are the core services that are offered in those six facilities. We also, and I'll get to that in a moment with the specialty services. So Henry County, these services are offered in Henry, at the Henry County Counseling Center. This is what we call our specialty services. These services are available to everyone in the agency. Henry County has its own peer support program here in McDonough. We also have a Behavioral Health Crisis Center located in Griffin. This is a brand-new facility. It was built and it opened up in June, July 2014. It's a 24-bed facility that offers crisis assessments, crisis stabilization, and a six-bed observation program. We also provide assertive community services. I'm not, in the interest of time, I'm not going to get into the details of all these programs, but if anybody has any questions about what these programs do or what they're for, I'd be glad to answer those. And then we have a host of residential programs. Inspirations is an emergency residential program. People are not able to, we've encountered someone in any of the counties that is in need of temporary shelter. We've got four beds that we can put that person in for up to two weeks, located in Spalding County. Options is a residential program. It's an intensive residential program. We also have an intensive treatment residence located in Griffin, houses four females. And then we have the Georgia Housing Voucher Program and Shelter Plus Care that is also, we have placements all across the five counties for these programs. We have about 48 individuals placed here in Henry County that otherwise would be homeless. Typically, the mission criteria for these individuals is they have to be suffering from one of those disabilities, either a behavioral health disability, addictive disease, or developmental disability, to be eligible for these programs. But we do have 48 individuals placed here in Henry County, and they receive services. These are our addictive disease services that we provide. Assessments, educational groups, intensive outpatient, clinical evaluations, and transitions. Transitions is a 10-bed facility located in Griffin. Occasionally, we get individuals suffering from addictive disease that go in and out of the crisis unit. They have a high recidivism rate where they come back and forth. This allows them to go out and actually stay in an apartment for 30 days while being involved in treatment. And this cuts down that recidivism rate, and then we oftentimes refer them to long-term programs. And that facility stays full most of the time. These are some other addictive disease programs. We have a, New Choices is a program located in Barnesville. We have approximately 27 beds there. Women with addictive disease can be referred to this program by the Department of Family and Children's Services and can go there with their children. And children participate in public school. They also have a nursery there. And then one of their requirements is to get a job while they're working there and also to address their addictions. These are developmental services, disability services. These are intellectual developmental disability services. These are also provided across the counties. We have residential services, which includes community living arrangements. These are oftentimes group homes where four individuals will live with 24-hour staff. We have community living supports. This is when individuals typically will live in a, either with family or with other individuals and receive support from McIntosh Trail. We also have day services, pre-vocational, community access, supported employment. And we also provide special medical supplies and special equipment to those individuals in need of those things. These are our strengths, some of which I've listed. And we are CARF accredited. That's Certified Association of Rehabilitation Facilities. We just received a three-year accreditation for that. There's a certain standard of care that you have to maintain across the agency in order to achieve that accreditation. These are some sites located in Henry County. This is a county-provided building that we have at the Henry County Counseling Center. This is where our outpatient center is located. This is a peer support program that we were, that the county provided to us at Work Camp Road. We're very proud of this facility. We have about 20 individuals that attend this program each day, about 25, actually. Peer support is where individuals who are receiving services can have a program where they run that program with staff that are nearby, but they learn, they develop their social skills. They learn how to fill out applications for employment. They learn about their illness, medications, all the different kinds of things that they need to know about being able to manage their illness. This is another building that's provided by the county. This is our Henry County Developmental Disability Center located at 672 Industrial Boulevard. We have about 100 individuals that attend this program each day. And we're very, again, thankful for the use of these facilities. Otherwise, we would have a difficult time serving these individuals. So we appreciate that support. Sharon Henley is the Director of that program. These are some other programs offered in Henry County. The Henry County, we collaborate with the Henry County Resource Court for individuals who are needing behavioral health care services. We have also the Henry County DUI Court located at the Counseling Center. And we also have a veterans program. We're serving about 400 veterans right now in Henry County, and that number is growing. Henry County and Fayette County are our highest population of veteran individuals that seek services with us. And we have some specialized therapy programs that we provide for the veterans. We have approximately, and I've already mentioned this, about 48 individuals that are living in residential placements here in the county that otherwise would be considered homeless. These are some of our challenges that we're faced with right now. We have a very difficult time recruiting licensed staff. We have a difficult time competing with the private sector. So many of these individuals will work in the larger populated areas, although we are, we do have licensed staff here, but that's one of the challenges, is recruiting and retaining those staff. We also are interested in doing more education around the Counseling Center, letting people know that they can get help in managing their illness, much like anyone does when they manage, you know, their blood pressure or diabetes or heart-related issues or problems. And then we are, we do experience competition within the market for compensation. As I mentioned, we are joining more payer panels. This slide I included just so that I could sort of give the board sort of historical perspective of the numbers that we have served since 2010. If you look at those numbers, you can see a steady increase. We didn't experience an increase. I just recognized I left out 2013. I don't think we had an increase at that year. But from 2010 to 2016, we have experienced about an 85% increase on people who are requesting services and that are coming in. So we just ask that the county, as you consider us in the budget, that you recognize that the demand for services are growing and, as well as the county is growing, as you all well know. But we are getting a higher demand for services. One of the things that we've been through in this last year is a core redesign. Senate Bill 349 was passed, which restructured community service boards. All of our outpatient services are now called Community Behavioral Health Services. And we have completely redesigned our system to achieve greater accountability and to report to the state how we're utilizing the support that we receive. The support we receive from the state is for those individuals that otherwise would not have anywhere else to go. If we do not provide the insurance benefits that a person has, we have to refer them out to another location. But we are the public entity, meaning that if someone has nowhere else to go, they have no other resources, then we are mandated to treat those individuals. With that, we have certain required staffing requirements that we have to maintain, accreditation, certification, and licensing. As I mentioned, we have to maintain certain licensures in order to have services authorized to provide certain services that we provide to the individuals. Our treatment philosophy is recovery-oriented care. We believe that people can recover from their mental illness, their addictive disease, developmental disabilities. We feel like what we try to do is to normalize our individuals as much as possible, integrate them into the community. Most of our individuals want the same thing that everybody else wants. They want their own place to live. They want friends. And many of them want a job. And that's what we try to work on, and realizing that everybody has unique things that they desire. And recovery is based on that individual, where they are, what they want, who they want involved in their care, and all of those kind of things. So I'll open it up for questions or comments that the board may have or anybody that may want to ask a question. want to ask a question.
Any board member have any questions or comments? I yield the floor to District Four.
Coming in, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Looking back at your presentation, how do my veterans get a hold of your group and make contact with you?
Okay. The veterans come to us already authorized by the Veterans Administration. They go to Decatur, and they say where, they say that they want to receive services at the Henry County Counseling Center, and then we are an approved facility for the veterans. Then they are referred straight to us, and then we get them in for appointments, and then they enroll with us at that time. So, they come to us pre-authorized by the VA.
Okay. So, they need to go to the VA then first?
Yes.
Okay.
But we can assist with that. If someone comes in, we have two people here that can tell them what they need to do to...
Yeah, the VA can be a little difficult to navigate.
Yes, it can, and we can assist with that.
Okay.
I yield the floor.
Yes, sir.
The VA clinic in Stockbridge up here, can they authorize that, or do they have to go to Decatur?
They have to go to Decatur right now, as I understand it. Now, that's a good question. We could possibly, we have a VA liaison who's employed with the Veterans Administration that is placed here in Henry County in our office, and it may be wish she could help facilitate that, which would make that process a little bit easier for community services.
I know I've got a few friends that go to the clinic up in Stockbridge, so I didn't know. I just put it out there. Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else have any comment?
I think y'all are doing a good job, have been for many, many, many years, and I appreciate what y'all do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, board.
Splash update. Rocky Romero, Transportation Project Director, and Ron Burke-Halt, Capital Projects Directors.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning.
In the interest of time, we prepared our presentation to focus on the current status of the projects in SPOST IV. More detailed information you'll see on the slides as we put up. This PowerPoint presentation will be posted on the website for SPOST. If you go to the county website, you go to the department, and you go to SPOST, you'll see this, and you'll see more detailed information. We'll start out with our county-wide project update. This is our 911 radio replacement. It's currently 20% complete and be completed in January 2018. The one remount and the one new ambulance are complete. Animal control renovations are complete. Fire station capital equipment, they're in progress. Fire Station Number 14, which is Luella area, is currently 50% complete with the estimated completion in January of next year. Station 15, which is North Mount Carmel area, is 60% complete with an April 2017 completion. Station 16, notice to proceed has just been issued. The contractor is just currently putting up cell fence and estimated completion of Henry County DOT construction equipment is complete. Countywide jail renovations, Pod B is complete and Pod A is currently in progress. The new interchange on I-75, the feasibility study has been completed. The 30 new police patrol vehicles is complete. Sewer to the airport is in progress. Sewer to Fairview is also in progress. 13 of the 17 countywide projects are in progress or complete.
Now, we're going to go to District One project updates.
Fire Station Number Two, it's a replacement fire station, currently 75% complete, estimated completion December 2016. Tanger Ball Field is in progress.
On the major transportation, McDonough Parkway, roadway acquisition is in progress. Stairway 81, design concept is in progress. That's a concept of the McDonough Parkway. Intersection improvements, Locust Road, Jackson Street, that's completed by GDOT. South Bethany and Old Jackson, final plans in progress. 81 and Mount Bethel is complete. Harris Drive is complete. Leicester Mill Road, construction bid was open last month, and we'll be bringing it to the board later this month for approval. Pixville Road, design is in progress from New Hope to the bridge and as well as the other section of Pixville is in design as well. And Wims Road is complete. On the bridges, 505 are in progress. There's the King Mill over Tussah Hall, Locust Grove over Indian Creek, Jackson Lake over Mackey Creek. That one is under, all of them are under construction. Just want to make a point that Jackson Lake, we're going to be closing that road next Monday, November the 7th. We have put signs out there and just, it's going to be closed during the duration of the bridge replacement. These are the other two bridges that are on repair as well. On the resurfacing widening and surface treatment for District One, 13 roads have been complete. That's an example of a surface treatment for Davis Lake Road. So, as a summary for District One, two out of three capital projects in progress, 15 of 16 transportation projects in progress or complete. Now, we're going to go to District Two project update.
The senior rec center in Hampton is currently in progress. Construction is 75% complete, estimated completion in January 2017.
On intersection improvements, Industrial Parkway at Stairway 20, roadway is in progress. Jodico Road at Black Hall, roadway is basically completed at this time. We're just waiting to close those parcels, and we'll be ready to bid out. Mill Road at 81, roadway is in progress. Mount Carmel and Chambers, bid opening was last month, and I'll be bringing it up later today for board approval for construction. Simpson Mill at Hampton Locust Grove, preliminary plans in progress. That's the roundabout concept for Mount Carmel-Chambers. On their roads, Amalie, final design in progress. Farmer Drive is complete. Fields Drive is complete. Floyd Drive, Jones and Mount Olive, all of those are complete. Selfridge Road, preliminary plans in design. South Cleveland, preliminary plans in progress as well. South Mount Carmel, complete. Thorbred in progress, final design. And on District Two, the bridges, all bridges are in progress. For resurfacing widening and surface treatment, 24 roads have been complete. That's one of the recent roads that we just did an FDR, full death reclamation and resurfacing, Simpson Mill Road. So, summary, one of two capital projects in progress, 20 out of 23 transportation projects in progress or complete. Now, we're going to go to District Three update.
Heritage Park improvements are complete. Jason T. Harper Arena improvements, the design has been complete. The permitting is in process, and we're currently getting a cost estimate. Northola Park is in progress. Current work at the park is an addition of 115 additional parking spaces.
On transportation, McDonough Parkway, final design is in progress. Stairway 81 is a concept design in progress. Intersection improvements, Bethany 81 is complete. Campground Road at Stairway 155, roadway is in progress, and we also just received a permit from GDOT, so we'll be ready to put it out for bid once roadway is complete later this month. Daily Mill at Jodico Road, construction is in progress. East Lake at Stairway 20, roundabout was open to traffic last Thursday. It's not completed, but the roundabout is, is in circulation, so, and it's looking really good. We'll probably have another month before we complete that project. And Jodico Road at Old Grove, construction is in progress. And that's a, that's an old picture, has changed since then. Intersection improvements, Lake Dull, Rogers and Ross, construction is in progress for the roundabout. 81 at Mount Bethel, that's complete. That's a picture of Mount Bethel. Their roads, Butler, Cantler, and East Nine, all complete. SKU, complete. Turner Church Road, roadway in progress. Turner Circle, complete. Daily Mill over on Bridges, Daily Mill and Elliot are in progress. Just talked about Jackson Lake is a shared project with District One as well, is in construction progress. District Three, resurfacing widening and surface treatment, 29 roads have been completed. That's a picture of East Lake after FDR and resurfacing. That's the rest of the list. Summary for District Three, three out of three capital projects in progress, 19 out of 22 transportation projects in progress or complete. District Four project update.
The Bud Kelly Park is complete.
Rockaway Road widening, concept design is in progress, and we're going to have a meeting with GDOT later this month with our consultant, who's actually here for another project. Banks Road at Rockaway is complete. East Lake, as mentioned before, is in progress. It's also a shared district with District, project with District Four. Hemp Hill Road at 138, construction is going to be out for bid this month. Roadways complete, basically. Then Mostly Road at Stairway 138, that's completed by GDOT. That's a concept of the roundabout for Hemp Hill. Their roads, Elliot Road, final design in progress. Roadways taken will be later this month in November. Under the bridge, Hemp Hill over James Creek, under construction as well, Old Conyers over Big Cotton, those are bridge repairs. And then Selfridge over Little Cotton, Indian Creek, preliminary design in progress. On resurfacing widening, resurfacing five projects, five roads are in progress. And then 15 have been completed. Summary for District Four, one of two capital projects complete, nine out of 11 transportation projects in progress or complete. District Five project update.
The new District Five park is in progress. Estimated completion is November 2016. Cochran?
Beautiful.
Cochran Park is in progress. The new sports field lighting will be starting the end of this month.
On transportation, Envo Block Road widening is, roadway's acquisition is in progress. On West Village Parkway, final design is in progress. That's an overview of the Envo Block with also the park on the, on the background. And then this is West Village concept. Intersections, East Atlanta Thurman at Flat Rock, preliminary design in progress. On the bridges, both bridges are under the bridge repair contract that is in progress. Resurfacing widening and surface treatment, we have six in progress or complete. They're currently working on that area, paving on regs and on FURBY as well this week. So, District Five project status summary, two of two capital projects in progress and five of nine transportation projects in progress. That's just a overview of where we stand. 75% of the capital projects are complete or in progress, and 85% of the transportation projects are complete or in progress. And that's, that's our presentation.
Thank you. While you're up there, in access presentation, we found it would be best served if we reviewed and considered the resolution approving the revised SPOST IV calendar year 2016 project list and project budgets. So, while you're at the podium, would you be so kind as to present that place?
Yes, sir. The voters of Henry County approved the SPOST IV referendum, the SPOST IV calendar year 2016 project list and project budgets in the amount of $65,887,362. That was approved in Resolution Number 1696. SPOST staff has revised the SPOST IV calendar year 2016 budget list, project list, and project budgets which are attached. The calendar year 2016 project budget is $59,644,955. Board will be coming back like we did last year at the first of the year, once we have the actual numbers from 2016, and we'll plug those in, and we'll give you the, the budget for 2017.
Any comments or questions from the board? I yield the floor to District One.
Ron, did you say Tanger Ball Field was in progress?
Yes, sir. There's, if you remember, we had shown a parking lot, a small parking lot up on that second tier. Right now, the funds that we have, we have, we have the funds to do the partial parking lot that's up there, but we're, we're working right now on the design up there so we can get that, that full parking lot in. What we wanted to do, Commissioner, we wanted to get everything done, done before we did the parking lot, okay? So, we stayed within budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? I yield to District Three.
Rocky, you mentioned Jackson Lake closing it down next week. Can you give me approximate time, how long it's going to be shut down?
It's going to take about nine months to, to replace that bridge. So, of course, the sooner we get it done, we'll open it as soon as we can, but we've got about nine months.
Okay. And also, I know we just resurfaced Airline at East Lake, and we widened that road as well.
Correct.
But would you take the citizens through the process of the full depth reclamation, what we're doing now compared to what we've done in the past?
Yes, Commissioner. A lot of the roads in the county were paved with no base. When I say base, there's no stone, stone underneath. Usually, we put six, eight, 12 inches of stone, depending on the, the traffic volume on the road. Airline, East Lake, Rex, Fairview, a lot of these roads were paved just on top of dirt, and they probably had about three to four inches of asphalt. But with all the vehicle volume we have, the trucks and heavy vehicles, the road, the asphalt doesn't hold real good on top of dirt. Of course, if, once you have a lot of rain, water will go through those existing cracks and make that base, that dirt base failure, give failures to the asphalt. That's why you have a lot of potholes. If you remember, well, now when a drought looks like, but back in December of last year, seems like we, we were in a very rainy, you know, it rained a lot during that time. So, the process basically is, we, there's a machine, there's a milling machine that mills the existing asphalt and will mix it with, with the dirt. And once they do that, they come in, they put cement. It depends on the type of, they do a testing on see how much the structural, the soil is. It could be 30 pounds per square yard of cement, or it could be up to 50 pounds of cement. And they'll mix the cement and mix all that, and what that does do, that will do is give a solid base. The cement will... That cement will make that soil harder, like a rock. And what they do, they put a layer of liquid prime and they put sand on top of that, make sure that the cars don't get all that liquid on their vehicles. And they let it sit for about four, five days to make sure that that soil gets hardened with that, with that cement. And then they'll come back and they put two layers of asphalt. And that's basically the process, it's, it's a little tedious, but at the end of the day, you're gonna have a good road that's gonna last twelve, fifteen years without having to maintain it.
Thank you.
I yield the floor to District Five.
Excuse me. I would like for the board to consider allowing District Five to flip-flop public safety projects. I have a police station at the corner of East Atlanta Road and, and Fairview Road. I think it's in, in a great position to, to battle crime in that area, it's in, it's in a perfect location. Also, Stop Bridge hasn't moved forward with the new police station. So when we initially had this discussion, it was our thought that Stop Bridge was going to, to start their own police station. We're gonna have to move the precinct to the northern portion of the county. Recently, I've had conversations with the fire chief and some personnel over at the Fire Station Six. And I had the chance to visit that station. And that station is in desperate need of a workup, a remodel. So what I would like the board to consider is allowing me to shift the police precinct to Priority Two and flip-flop the fire station, since they're both public safety projects, to Priority One. So we can move forward with a total remodel on Fire Station Six. They've told me that they love that location, they say it helps them to get where they need to go and serve our community. So I'm hoping that, that the board is amenable to, to making this happen for our public safety personnel.
I would, I would consider that. If somebody would do the study and get the paperwork up and, or we can study it and bring it forward. Anybody else have any questions or comment? We have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the revised Splot Four calendar year twenty sixteen project list and project budget. Somebody would move in that direction.
So move.
Have motion District Three. Second, District One, any further discussion, honor favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Presentation by Troy Engineering, relative to the Henry County Airport five-year capital plan.
Commissioner, this is our update. Being the Board of County Commissioners has authorized the next phase of the construction of Henry County Airport. We thought it's important you come in and see the phases of what we're going to the future, as we did on the admin side. This is a five-year capital plan. Our consultancy here to show you what they are graphically, and we can go through it a little bit at one at a time. Michael will introduce everybody that's here, and I'm pleased to tell you that we're making some advancements at the airport. GDOT has indicated that they're pleased with where we're going and how we've moved things along. And it's a credit to Michael and our consulting crew has been helping us out a great deal to get us off-center, so to speak. So with that, I'll turn it to Michael.
Can you put our picture up? That's Tara Field.
Look at, we have the Henry County sign right next to it.
That was a joke, but go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman. Yes, that's right. Good morning, Chairman, board members, fellow staff members and all in attendance here today. I want to introduce to you on behalf of Henry County and Henry County Airport, our engineering consultant, Troy Engineering. They're going to present to you this morning the capital improvement program that we have for Henry County Airport. We have Greg Teague, he's here with Troy Engineering.
In the microphone.
Chris Wright out over here, and Rebecca Collison, they will be presenting. And before they get started, I've got some things I want to hand out. Before I get started, before they get started, I'm gonna hand out some copies of the CIP for you guys to view. And of course, you'll be seeing it on, you know, on the screen as well, so. Go ahead.
I want to take a seat and enjoy the show. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and that's actually one of the things that we've got in this CIP is getting, getting some of those updates taken care of. What we wanted to do is just do a real quick recap of, of what this process is, why we have to do it. Basically, the capital improvement plan, in working with Georgia DOT and the Federal Aviation Administration, every year, the county is required to submit a five-year capital improvement plan to the state. So the way they want the capital improvement plan prepared is that for the first two years, the, the next two upcoming years, they want a very detailed work plan put together with, with budgets as to what the county is gonna be asking for funding assistance from the state and from the federal government for on that. It has to be submitted every year by the end of November, and then that is what is used as the basis for your allocation grants that are applied for in the upcoming fiscal year. One of the things you'll see in the handout that we provided is, and this is very hard to read, I'm not gonna sit here and try to go through this in detail, but this is actually the, the proposed submittal to Georgia DOT that goes through the very detailed, all of the projects that are included in each of the fiscal years, and also gives the breakdown between what the Henry County costs, the state cost and the federal cost are for those projects. So to keep from boring you and trying to strain your eyes in reading this, what we prepared, and Rebecca's gonna go over this in a little more detail, is this year by year, we've got an aerial that we're putting up on the screen now that just goes through those major projects, and she'll give you a little more detail on those.
Now, the CIP officially begins in FY two thousand and eighteen, but I kinda wanted to give everybody a catch-up on where we are right now. And this is kinda looking at things, you know, existing conditions, we still have the displaced threshold in. We're actually, this fall, constructing the Mount Pleasant Road relocation, which is going to allow us to continue with the removal of that displaced threshold, which I believe was your final requirement in your last commitment to GDOT. So we will be clear of that one once we get this project complete. And that also includes improvements to the runway safety area. Now, something else we decided to do this year was to put together some designs for crack seal, fencing, terminal area plan. And that's in order to get us set up to hopefully receive state funds at the beginning of the year on those. But like I say, those were good ones to kind of get us moving in the right direction and taking it upon ourselves to do that. The other thing we're doing this year is land acquisition services for Northwest Terminal Area, and that's some property that's currently on sale that we wanted to try and get in on and hopefully acquire that piece that we might continue and do the terminal a little closer to Speedway Boulevard and have some better sightings from that area. And so moving on to two thousand and eighteen, and this is the year that we're actually requesting funds for, and we'll be filling out pre-applications to the state and doing some detailed documentation and information back to the state on these. But on this one, we're looking to actually construct the crack seal and remarks that we're upfronting the design on this year. And hopefully, that would be with state funds. We're also looking to acquire the land for that Northwest Terminal Area and erect some perimeter fencing that we'll have done the design for this year. We're also asking if they can go ahead and approve the design of the Northwest Terminal Area, assuming we can get that land acquired as well as a needed taxiway widening, electrical rehab, and then design of that terminal building. We'll follow that with land acquisition services for the remainder of the through-the-fence parcels, which has been a plan for the airport for many years now. In two thousand and nineteen, and like I say, this is getting a little further out in our wish list, but what we're looking for in that one is actual acquisition of the through-the-fence parcels, the construction of your taxiway widening and rehab, as well as construction of the new terminal area. And for that one, what we'd also like to do that year is go ahead and get ourselves set up for the next runway extension, which would need a justification study and environmental assessment. I don't think it moved, oh, okay. And FY two thousand and twenty, we're not actually showing any land acquisition or construction this year. This is a year that would be used for design purposes. And that would be to go ahead and get the land acquisition services for the next phase RPZ for the runway extension, as well as getting the runway six end completely covered. But this design would include a new displaced threshold on the runway six end, as long, as well as an approach lighting system, which will allow for greater approaches to that end, as well as the design of the Phase Two of the runway extension and an ILS and approach lighting system on that end as well. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, we're looking for the actual acquisition of those lands in the RPZ, as well as the construction of the runway extension displaced threshold and additional perimeter fencing. And this year, we're also, like I say, wish list looking, but hoping that we can move into the design of the ultimate runway extension and land acquisition services for that RPZ. And then our ultimate goal with fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two would be the land acquisition of that final RPZ, as well as the ultimate runway extension and completion of the airport perimeter fencing. And I'll note that the perimeter fencing is phased, and that's based on each time we buy land that we'll be able to fence that new area. So that's why we kinda have it broken up between all of these years. And once we complete that, we'll need to do an ALP update showing all of the modifications, as well as a design to relocate the ILS and approach lighting system. Greg's trying to pull up a video right now that we had prepared as well to kinda illustrate what was happening at the airport and all of those future plans.
So one of the things-
You'd be kind enough to, we can't do it now. I've had a lot of inquiries about the graveyard and where the graveyard will end up after the, the relocation of Mount Pleasant. Could, could you reduce that and put your finger on where the graveyard will be at the end of all this?
Okay, the cemetery, we've actually avoided that with the relocation of the road, it comes around it, which I don't, maybe-
Could, could you show it?
That's showing.
We'll just wait till we get to the drawing where you show the proposed area. I thought that would have it.
I'll tell you what, I'm gonna advance the video because it does actually show the Mount Pleasant on there and we can stop it at that.
It's well protected, is, would that be a good statement?
Yes, yes, yes.
We completely avoid it with the project.
Would the family have, continue having access to it conveniently? I know they're gonna have access to it.
Yes, yes, there would be very convenient access to that, there's absolutely no impact to the cemetery. That was something that came up on the environmental that's been avoided with the design of the road.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
If I had a pointer, yeah, the, no, it's actually the other corner, or the bubble, this, this area.
So if, and hopefully the mouse pointer shows up on your screens as well, this area here is the cemetery in question. So they will still continue to have the same access they have now and avoid any conflicts from the construction that we're proposing.
And I would say, as we're acquiring land in that area, that is an area that would continue to be protected.
So one of the things that we found very helpful, because as you can see from that very detailed list that we have to submit to the state, and that's the format the state makes us put it in, it's difficult to communicate that to the general public. So one of the things we found is by putting together these aerials with the improvement shown on it, it, it does help in the communication efforts. The other advantage of this is if the county has an economic development prospect that comes in, something that can very easily be added to this is somebody wants to put an industrial building in or an airport hangar, we can add that to that to show them, here's what your building would look like on the airport or in the industrial park adjacent to the airport. It really gives them a much better feel for what they would look like being in Henry County. But this is something that can be uploaded to the county's website, other things like that, just helping that communication effort. The big picture for this capital improvement program, like I said, the, the next two years are really the, the ones that need the most focus on. One of the things that we always love to communicate to all of the communities we work with is how much of the local dollars are you leveraging with state and federal dollars? When you look through this list, if you look at the entire CIP, only seven percent of the money out of the twenty-one million in here is local money. Everything else is state and federal. So you get, you're getting roughly a fourteen to one return on your investment in the airport with state and local funds. So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, with that, that completes our presentation, we're available for any questions you might have.
Everybody, I yield the floor to District Five.
Once this is all completed, what size planes, what, what is the largest plane that can land, that will be able to land at the, at the airport? Could you land something as large as a CRJ?
Once we get to the ultimate runway configuration and approaches, I would say yes.
Could you give us a percentage?
At that point, you're going to have about sixty-five hundred feet of usable space. It's actually, it'll be seventy-one hundred, but we'll have a displaced threshold on runway six end, increasing that approach. But it'll be a C category approach on each end and should be able to take the jets at that point.
What about the asphalt? Someone told me that, given the fact that there's asphalt there, that it would, that it would tear up, the runway would tear up a lot faster than cement.
Yeah, one of the things we're seeing as you move from the classification airport yard currently to the higher classification, that definitely may be something we need to take a look at with the state. The, some other jurisdictions have transferred to the, the concrete on it. It's, it's really a matter of what can we get the state to participate in funding on, because we're working with them from a priority standpoint. But that's definitely something, as we move to that new classification, we'll keep in the picture.
I believe that the intent of the state, as well as each time we do one of these runway extensions, like we did on the first one, it would include a strengthening and overlay of that existing pavement. So we will be continuing to strengthen it as we're increasing the length for those bigger planes.
You would, you would anticipate the reimbursement at the same level, ninety, ninety-five percent?
Yes, it would be included in those projects.
I couldn't hear exactly what the Honorable Commissioner said, but him and I was on the same page. I wanted to, my question was, at the completion of the phase in two thousand and twenty-two, what would be the total length of the airport, of the runway?
The total length would be seventy-one hundred feet with a usable length, including the displaced threshold at one end of sixty-five hundred.
Okay, what would be-
You're gonna have a six hundred foot-
What would be the thickness of the asphalt at that time?
Oh, at that time?
We'd be up to a total section of well over twelve inches of-
Reason I ask that, right now, with the composition it's in, it will take a single axle aircraft up to thirty thousand pound. And then it will take a double axle aircraft up to forty-five thousand pounds. So the thickness is, is very significant as to increase the, the size of airplanes that come in there. Right now, forty-five thousand pound, pretty, pretty good size corporate jet, if you call it that, yes.
Well, during each phase, we'll also run a new pavement analysis, and that will determine the size of the overlay and how much strengthening we do at each phase. But we'll be looking into the aircrafts that are planned for this airport, making sure that we can service those.
So will there be more funding after Phase Two for the ILS system?
Yes.
Will that be included in Phase Two?
Well, the ILS system will be constructed along with Phase Two, it'll, it'll be under the same GDOT contract. It'd probably be bid out separately, just with it being an electrical focus for pricing purposes, but it'll be under the same GDOT contract.
So for practical purposes, in, in order to line up even a, a normal approach, not considering ILS capabilities, to land on two-four, they would really start a descent around the Lakes Bay area. Would that be a true statement?
Around which area?
Lakes Bay, it'd be about six or seven nautical miles.
That's probably correct.
The threshold.
I haven't analyzed that, but that seems reasonable. I haven't analyzed that, but that seems reasonable.
Reason I ask that, I have some inquiries as to how the future improvement is going to affect their home value. And I know that it, somewhere in the course of time, it could enhance it if it gets bigger, like Atlanta. Atlanta, when it was Hatesville, and when I was just a little kid, they had to go up there Sunday at lunch and have a picnic, and somebody'd holler, "Here comes one." Now, you see them staggered on three runways, a mile and a half staggered apart. But it would have some negative impact on homeownership that's under the threshold, just like Atlanta. You got, right now, noise abatement is not an issue. And I know FAA is going to address the noise abatement issues. But now, it's, the only time we have noise issues is when somebody comes in and they don't follow the published approach. And what it does, if they're coming in, instead of going out and hitting the glide slope and coming in, they come over to City of Hampton, which is really not that bad, because they slow up, and then they just turn it in and land. What really gets is when they take off, and then low altitude, instead of gradually going out, they turn quickly. And then, you know, they come over Hampton, and you know where the thrust is.
Right.
Anyway.
Well, and that is something that, you know, we look at the community needs and their wants, and reevaluate this on a year-by-year basis to make sure that we're not doing anything that negatively impacts the rest of the community.
That's the only questions I have. I yield the floor, if anybody wants to have any more comments. Thank you so much.
Just a reminder, the consultancy here, that we will have a groundbreaking out at the airport this afternoon, because we had made arrangements for transportation, but y'all have said you didn't need it. I've stopped that. So we'll just meet out there soon as we return to this. Give us about 25 or 30 minutes to get out there. On the other side of that, I certainly want to congratulate the board. $21 million in investment on what will be a jewel of the South, so to speak, for the amount of money we've got into this and where this is going. I'm very proud for the board and very happy for Henry County to be in the position you are today. Thank you for the good work from Crow Engineering, certainly Michael Tony, for taking the lead out there and getting us to the next step. This year's been a big year. We got the hangars. Within this coming year, you'll be on a connected sewer system, which changes the entire complex to be able to have a different kind of industrial component to it. So big things are happening at the airport. Just want to congratulate the board on the good year you've had there, and looking forward to a better year this year. Big things at the airport. Thank you.
Can I second that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wished to speak for public comments must sign in with the county clerk. Prior to the beginning of the meeting, you must complete the public comment. Speaker former you will not be recognized. You will be able to address the boards for five minutes. Each person who addresses this board shall not make personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of the board, staff, or general public. And any person who makes such remarks or who utters loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language, or engages in any other disorderly conduct which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any board meeting, shall at the discretion of the chairman or a majority of the board be barred from further audience before the board's next, during the meeting. I've got three here. I've recognized for five minutes, Mr. Carl Swenson. Mr. Swenson, if you'll address the podium and state your name for record, please. You've got five minutes.
Hey, I'm Carl. Glad to meet you guys again. Thurman Road, Stockbridge, Georgia, the unincorporated part. We were talking a little bit about the SPOLOST, SPOLOST 4. Let me see if you can possibly, I guess you can see that. This happens to be Thurman Road in East Atlanta, okay? That right there is a porta potty that has been sitting there now for a little better than a month and a half. I guess there's a reason for it, but it really is an eyesore, and somebody's paying for it. Now, I realize that you guys aren't. No, no, you've got a company that you contracted for. But if you've contracted for a company to put this out there, you've been obviously paying them too much, because there's no work being done, nothing. But we got a nice porta potty. Gentlemen, this comes in line with what I want to talk about. The past couple of weeks have, actually, the past few months have given the country a bit of a shock. We found that in the Department of Justice, Mr. Loretta Lynch is not going to convene a grand jury in the case of the crimes against America by Hillary Clinton, okay? It's important that that applies here, because that very same grand jury, in all likelihood, wouldn't come up with the same conclusions that the FBI lie director, James Comey, did. Who are these people now? Are they representatives of ours, or do they work strictly for the government at their behest? And conversely, why, here in Henry County, cannot a citizen take his complaints of criminality directly to the grand jury? Well, let me tell you why. Because the same thing applies here, as applies at the national level. The Department of Justice, the Department of Law, whatever you want to call it, the DA in Henry County, in Clayton County, will not let the people bring these things before the grand jury. The grand jury, by the way, happens to be the only place, the only place, that real people can take real crimes and expect real action. So I guess I understand why the DA doesn't want to let us do that. I guess I understand why the lawyers and why the attorneys, the counselors everywhere don't want to let you do that, because they don't want to be held responsible for the actions that they're doing. But it's making me real mad, real mad, because we don't have justice at the national level, we don't have justice at the local level, and, gentlemen, when you took your oath of office, it was to make sure that you were protecting us, the citizens, not you, the elected. You're not acting as elected. I asked you one time before, "Get me before them. I have criminal allegations." Not one of you has stepped forward, not one. And this, my friends, is a great indication of what we've come to. I'll leave it at that.
Rocky, can you let me know if that porta potty is the result, is the result of the SPOLOST Department or one of the other county departments? Okay.
Mr. Larry Moore. Approach your bench, and, I mean, the podium, and state your name for record, please.
My name is Larry Moore, and I'm representing Ethics in Government. We've had tremendous growth in the last year, and we have now applied for a nonprofit, and then it'll be to hire an attorney, so that we'll make our cases known to the board. They say that stupidity, the definition, is to just keep doing it the same way. If it's wrong, you just keep doing it. It'll get better. No, it won't. You know, we got a taxpayer in Henry County that the Henry County Police Department has been to his house 59 times. That equates to an officer spending three weeks at that man's house, plus car, plus gas, plus upkeep, and we just keep doing stupidity over and over and over. You would think somebody would go up there and figure out what the problem is. It's not that hard. And then this week, I was just totally amazed. A mother with four children, a hard-working mother, and a good mother that I personally She has asked for her husband to stay away from her house. She's the only breadwinner, has been for years. Stay away from my house. Just leave us alone. Please leave us alone. On her phone, please leave us alone. The other night, he comes home. She's bought the children a little puppy. Now, last week, last month, in this room right here, I saw all kind of first responders get allocades of how you took care of a puppy. Well, she's sitting there with a puppy in her lap, and he comes in and throws that puppy against the wall. And she hollers, "Leave us alone," and hits him in the chest. He hits her in the face. Now, remember, she's the breadwinner. She owns the house, not him. A 21-year-old Henry County officer comes out, won't listen to her oldest daughter, who said, "My daddy was wrong." Doesn't listen to the mother, who's paying and owns the house. We've asked him to leave us alone. She don't worry about that little puppy that everybody else was worried about the week before. And that 21-year-old takes her to the jail and locks her up. Now, that was two weeks ago, gentlemen. And that mother and those children have been separated. And this is a criminal act. And if you don't believe this, go check it out yourself. I'll gladly let you meet with her. Is that justice? Maybe we do need to bring a grand jury forward. And, you know, I'm fixing to slow this thing down a little bit. Mr. Chairman, it says that I can't point fingers and name names. You said that.
Yes, sir.
Well, I want that bully from the pulpit to quit commenting every time I get up here and have something to say against people. You need to control that bully in the pulpit as well, Mr. Chairman. I won't call his name. We'll discuss that at a later date. But I think you, I think I deserve the same as you do. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Jane Rutledge, come to the podium and state your name for record, please.
I am Jane Niski Rutledge. I reside at 858 Honey Creek Road, McDonough, Georgia. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I continue to ask for necessary funds for our police department, sheriff department, fire department, and EMS department. I want to see justification and pay and equipment that they deserve. Our police department, sheriff's department, firemen, and EMS employees are dedicated servants. Today, I asked the chairman and each district commissioner to go deep, deep, deep in our reserve funds to come forward with the money to buy each police officer and sheriff deputy a new state-of-the-art body radio, body camera, and bulletproof vest, paid in full for each officer by the county. A conservative estimate is $2,500 per officer. This is pennies compared to the airport and parks that I just saw flash on the board that we are building and renovated. We have our fire department and EMS personnel, who are also in half been in need of the same started state-of-the-art equipment for each fireman and EMS worker. These employees are our first line of defense and protection for our families and communities. We need to find a 10% raise for these departments before we tackle our excessive improvements at Tara Field extending into 2022. The airport was a dead expense for Clayton County. I just hope Henry County can make something out of it that Clayton couldn't. The only, the rich will use the airport. I don't care how much you color the picture, it's still not helping all of the constituents and the voters in the county. Our county voters and taxpayers desire to see money spent that is going to protect them, to protect the citizens who pay the taxes. The police, sheriff, EMS, and firemen, once again, are living on means below they should be paid. Once again, Henry County, we're living beyond our means and ignoring our dedicated longtime employees who serve us every day and protect us. But yet, we're ready to put money into the Tara Field. I love to say Tara reminds me of Gone with the Wind. A comparison that I'm using, and I'm not demeaning anybody. When I was running for chairman of the Board of Commissioners in 2012, the chairman made 62.5. Now, he makes a beginning salary of 45. A beginning commissioner makes 35. This is a person like myself, who would have had no experience, a starting salary, to be a commissioner or chairman. With no experience, I would have been making more than the guys and ladies who serve us daily and protect our roads, our schools, our parks. We need to dig deep, deep, deep into our pockets. My father-in-law, Milton Rutledge, was chief of police of McDonough from the late '50s to the mid-'80s. Pop and I were working diligently in '79 and '80 on these same issues, and I don't see that we've really improved that much. These people are not, first of all, we're not fully staffed. Second of all, we're not fully paid in. They're not being compensated, and we're going to soon start losing dedicated employees. And why can't we come out of our reserve funds and correct this and move forward? Put the airport on hold. We didn't need it to begin with. 21 million, and what do we have? And the value of it is 3 million? Have you looked at the value of the airport versus what we've put in it? I know this goes back eons ago, starting in 2007, when we acquired it. I'm only asking you, please give all of these departments a 10% raise, but before that, give them the body equipment they need, because look what happened in Henry County last week. Thank you.
Time is up. I would like to make a comment, just for clarification. The chairman before me made 57,000. And just before I took the oath of office, starting in January 2013, the previous board reduced that chairman's pay down to 53,000, knowing that most of them wouldn't get it. But anyway, House Bill 554 that was approved by the General Assembly and suggested for this board, that neutered the chairman, the, right now, I make 53,000 as chairman, and will be for another month and 29 days. But starting January 1st of 2017, the new chair will only receive 45,000. So I just wanted to clarify the numbers.
These ideas, Mr. Chairman, were provided to me before I laid down my qualification fee, and I was part of 62.5.
Come on, recognize the, Mr. Bill Tony is on the agenda for 15 minutes to address the board. Come up and state your name for the record, please, and you'll have 15 minutes.
First Amendment, First Amendment's very, very important to all of us. Mr. Barron, what this is going to show is some of the, some of the things that, for people that get up here and voice their opinion, and ask y'all for your votes and all, to do the right thing, and you rebel against us and treat us like we shouldn't even be here. All right, what this is talking about, a vote with House Bill 15, that's 401, in which they took... in which they took $2 million. And Mr. Barron voted to do it, and he's my commissioner, by the way. Take it from a police precinct and put it into a water park in Fairview. This is one of it. The other one was for the golf course, which was supposed to be making money by now, which I just got a report that they've lost a lot of money. So these are things that I have a right to get up here and speak about, and I have a right to ask you to vote no on. So with that being said, we'll go to the video. Mr. Barron verbally assaulted me outside the door here. And I just wanted to explain. He told me I didn't know anything. Basically, I was stupid. And I took offense to it.
I'm not gonna get too deep into this. You didn't see the whole video. Commissioner Moss and Iself was outside talking to Mr. Tony's brother. And he approached me, and he was dissatisfied with where we had voted on the matter. I tried to explain to him why I felt like we needed to vote that, but he wasn't gonna hear it. Now, he disagreed with me, and he's got every right to do that. But I've got a right to stand up for the way I voted. Now, for three, over three years, I've been trying to get Mr. Tony to like me. And some people are never gonna like it regardless. And, you know, I should have just said, "The meeting's over. The vote's voted." I should have left the meeting and went on to my call. When you watch the video, you can make it sound like it's this or that all you want. But the fact of the matter is, I let Mr. Tony drag me into confrontation about this vote that I shouldn't have. And the only other thing that I'm gonna say, not the only thing I'm gonna say, but the only thing that I'm gonna say is I've been praying about this every day. And I've been praying for you, Mr. Tony. And I'm gonna continue to pray for you every day. And I'm gonna pray for Henry County, that we all do the right thing for our citizens.
Approve where Rick Jeffries has made any money off the county.
Sure I do.
Made any money financially.
It's right here. Would you like to see it?
Yes, I would. I wanna see where he's financially. Huh?
Citizen of the state, that's his financial.
Now, what I'm saying is, his private business, has he made any money off the county by serving on the Water Authority Board?
His influence? I don't know.
Financially, has he made any money?
There's your financial freedom.
Well, you ain't gave me nothing. Wouldn't you just give it to me? Good Lord! I ain't no fash.
If you could put it on the overhead for us, too. It's from Representative John Yates. And then put it on the overhead, if you don't mind, too.
That's not what I said.
He says you had a meeting with Representative John Yates.
If you want the other four gentlemen to come here, I'm willing to get them up.
Let's put it on overhead, and then while it's getting set up, I'll read this. This is dated May 11th. Because we've been accused by Mr. Tony that we're not doing our research and due diligence. So that's the reason all these letters are dated, is because you asked for clarification. We wanted to give you acting clarification. So I'm gonna go through these piece by piece, so we can hopefully put this to bed for good. On May 11th of 2015, a letter dated, titled to Mr. Bill Tony, from Representative John Yates, who's a state representative for District 73. He said, "Dear Mr. Tony, my friend Senator Rick Jeffries tells me that you have made a statement about my relationship with the senator that I find incorrect. The statement is that if Senator Jeffries accepts a position on the Henry County Water Authority while remaining a Georgia state senator, that this would be a conflict of interest. I do not recall ever meeting you or talking to you, and certainly would not have made such a statement, as I've never thought that way. In fact, I admire him for wanting to take on this responsibility. Sincerely yours, John Yates, State Representative, District 73." Also, did Mr. Senator Jeffries even went a step further? He went to a local attorney out of Griffin. He went to Andrew Wayland, who wrote a nice letter dated May 12th of 2015. It says, "Dear Rick, I appreciate you conferring with me about the unfounded allegations cast against you by a Henry County citizen alleging a conflict exists between your services as state senator, a member of the Henry County Water Authority, and the co-owner of J&amp;T Environmental Services, a company that manages small water systems. I have reviewed the opinion dated April 1st, 2015, by the Honorable Sam Olens, Attorney General of Georgia, and the opinion dated April 24th, 2015, from Deputy Legislative Counsel Jeff Lanier. I find both opinions to be correct analysis of conflict of interest law in Georgia. I have personally known you for many years and have been familiar with your services of J&amp;T provides to water systems in central Georgia. In examining your work through J&amp;T, I do not find that you or the company have performed any services for Henry County Water Authority. There is no conflict arising from you providing materials or services to water systems other than the authority, which is a legal entity in its own right. Combined with your former services as Henry County Commissioner, you are known to be a reputable public servant who has given freely in the best interests of the county and your senatorial district. If this gentleman continues to appear before the county commission to make false allegations that cast dispersions on your good character, we need to seriously consider filing a defamation lawsuit. Please keep me advised as to his future actions."
I asked you a question right now, you keep rambling on. This says this letter's to me.
Right.
How did you get it?
And I met with Representative Yates. It is only my second time ever meeting with him. Mr. Yates signed a new letter correcting the letter that Mr. Preston had. I would like to show you the letter now.
I'd like for, if I can approach, I'd like for Mr. Preston.
Letter of May 11th regarding Mr. Bill Tony. I have recently had my memory refreshed after speaking with my staff, who reminded me that I did meet with Mr. Tony and four other individuals from Henry County during his past legislative session. This meeting took place in my office at the state capitol. During this meeting, I was asked a question whether it was proper for Senator Rick Jeffries to serve on the Henry County Water Authority Board. Representative Yates called an attorney from their Legislative Council office for advice. Legislative Council did provide his thoughts on the matter. I hope this letter clears up any confusion. I meet with many people in my office, and when Senator Jeffries contacted me about Bill Tony, I didn't recall who he was, as I had never met Mr. Tony before. Now I recall meeting Mr. Tony in my office. Sincerely, John Yates."
Thank you, sir. By the way, Rick Jeffries in 2009.
Rick Jeffries is partnered with...
From where I stand, Mr. Preston may have violated not only the county ethics ordinance, but also the state ethics rule as well. In conclusion, I have before, I've come before this board as a citizen of this county. I have constitutional right to speak on these matters of public concern. As a citizen, I should not have my motives or integrity questioned simply because you don't like what I have to say. When citizens are bullied and attacked by public officials simply because we exercise our First Amendment rights, it's time to get new public officials. I have, all I have ever asked for y'all to do is do the right thing. Be open, honest, and transparent. Thank you very much.
Aqua Genesis is a partnership between Brian Preston and Senator Rick Jeffries.
I want to explain, Aqua Genesis is, here's the thing. I'm an entrepreneur. I've started businesses. I've had businesses that have done very well. I've had businesses that didn't work out. I mean, that's the risk you run. That's the great American dream of being a serial entrepreneur. Aqua Genesis was a concept. If you go and check with the federal government, you'll see there was never, has never, been a tax return filed for that business concept. And to use the concept that I had a, you know, an idea that didn't turn out to be a viable business and then say I'm unethical, it's a little inappropriate. You know, I will tell you, Mr. Tony, it sounds like there was just a misunderstanding. You know, Representative Yates drafted that letter. He never defunct that letter. It just sounded like it was a misunderstanding. You didn't recall it. You clarified the record. I appreciate you clarifying that record, and that's why I read the letter gladly out loud. That was never my idea, was the gotcha with the part. If that's, I just was reading, that was not my declaration. It was the Representative Yates', and it sounds like you clarified it. So I appreciate your time. And I'm gonna take Ms. Hinton's advice and just thank you for coming before us, because I do think the First Amendment's an incredible right that we have. And I think it's a great country to live in. I appreciate you guys. I just wanted to clarify, so nobody thought I was doing anything unethical, because my mother watches these shows. You know, my family watches this, and, you know, I've always tried to follow the rules, because you don't mess with the people that have the guns. That's the IRS, that's the federal government. You don't mess with those people. You follow the rules.
Okay, what I have here is, Mr. Barron, you pretty well called me a liar about October 4th meeting. I went down three hours and $400. I got a polygraph test. Each one of you have a copy of it. My word means something to me. The highlighted part says, "No deception" at that meeting. Everything. Mr. Barron, I asked you, do you want to go down? I will pay the $400 and have you to do a polygraph with me. You challenged my character. You challenged my truthfulness. And, sir, it was you, not me. I would be more than happy to pay the $400 to get you a polygraph test. Thank you very much.
Consent agenda. The following items shall be considered on the consent agenda. Before voting on the consent agenda, the chairman will provide opportunity to add or delete any item, building and planning review. A resolution approving a request for the creation of a new streetlight district in Park Point Pod 2 subdivision located in North Mount Carmel Road. Resolution approving a request for a creation of a new streetlight district for Longley Phase 2 Unit 2 subdivision on Turner Church Road. Public Safety. Henry County Fire Department. Resolution to approve memorandum agreement between Henry County Fire Department and the Georgia Department of Public Health. Another resolution to approve, award and approve the use of $8,813.13 from federal asset forfeiture and CSEs funds to purchase rifles for the SWAT team from Edge Public Safety. And if I misspoke, that would be for the Henry County PD, Henry County Police Department. So I will give the board time now to add to this consent or delete any item. If not, will somebody move, we approve the consent items as read. Have motion District 3? Second District 5, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Resolution warning to bid for construction from Mount Carmel and Chambers Road. Mr. Romero.
Morning, Chairman and former members. Mount Carmel Road at Chambers Road is an approved District 2 SPLUS 4 intersection improvement project. Seal bids were solicited through the purchasing department for construction. Seal bid number 17-17. Twelve seal bids were received and reviewed. The lowest bid is $635,974.60 from CMES Inc. Staff recommends approval of the ward of bid number 17-17 for construction of Mount Carmel Road at Chambers Road to CMES in the amount provided. This resolution also authorized the county manager or his designated to approve changes less than $50,000.
Anybody got any questions or comments?
Somebody move, we approve a resolution to the Henry County Board of Commissioners approving the bid award for the construction of Mount Carmel Road at Chambers Road. Have motion District 5? Second District 3, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Slow move.
Thank you.
Ordinance amendment. Amending Article 2 of Chapter 3-6 of the Henry County, Georgia Code of Ordnance, dissolving the provision of the City of Stockbridge County Municipal Planning Commission. Mr. Gibbs.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. On October 1st, 2016, the City of Stockbridge passed a resolution to establish their own zoning advisory board. And as a result, the respective zoning advisory board member that served on the Henry County Zoning Advisory Board was selected as one of their new zoning advisory board members. And given that the passing of their UDC, they call their new code Unified Development Code, the passing of that included the formation of their zoning advisory board, given that that has occurred, to maintain and/or keep their appointee on our zoning advisory board, is no longer needed. It will be a duplication or replication of services. So with that said, staff has drafted a resolution that is before you to dissolve the City of Stockbridge appointee to the Henry County Zoning Advisory Board, so that we are not duplicating that service with respect to our zoning advisory board and now their newly formed zoning advisory board. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody got any comments or questions?
If not, an ordinance for the purpose of amending Article 2 of Chapter 3-6 of the Henry County, Georgia Code of Ordnance, dissolving the vision for the City of Stockbridge County Municipal Planning Commission member. Somebody move in that direction? Have motion District 5? Second District 1, any further discussion? Raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Slow move.
Thank you.
Resolution approving the purchase of necessary equipment, emergency equipment for two new pumper fire stations. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
Fine, thank you. Day's early, though.
This is a resolution approving the purchase of the necessary equipment for the two new pumper fire trucks. Whereas the operational need and general fund dollars have been identified for the purchase of the equipment for the two new fire pumper fire trucks, and whereas the purchase of the two new pumper fire trucks was approved with Resolution 16-229 on August 16th, 2016, and whereas funds were approved on Resolution 16-223 on August 2nd, 2016, for the equipment on two new pumper fire trucks. Whereas Municipal Emergency Services has provided the attached quote for emergency equipment in the amount of $96,080.94 NPP Gov GPO contract. And now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County awards the purchase of necessary equipment from MES in the amount of $96,080.94 and authorizes the chairman to execute all appropriate documentation.
Anybody have any comments or questions for the chief? If not, we have a resolution approving the purchase of necessary emergency equipment for two new pumper fire trucks. Somebody move in that direction? Have a motion from District 3? Second District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Resolution approving Henry County Fire Department to add three lieutenant positions to Station 14 and three captain positions to Station 15 and a budget amendment from fund balance.
Whereas the Henry County Fire Department is dedicated to the protection of live property and the environment by providing professional and courteous services of exceptional quality and fire prevention, public fire and life safety education, fire suppression, advanced life support, hazardous materials response, technical rescue response, and fire investigation at an acceptable cost to the community. And whereas the Henry County Fire Department has identified a need to add three lieutenant positions for Station 14 and three captain positions for Station 15 in the amount of $560,754. And whereas the Henry County Fire Department is in need of advertising three lieutenant positions for Station 14 and three captain positions for Station 15. And whereas during the budgeting process, there was a failure to budget for officers' positions. Without these positions, there will not be a complete team, i.e. no supervisors. And whereas a budget amendment from general fund is required in which $560,754 is transferred from general fund balance to the necessary fire department accounts. And whereas due to there being, no chief officers on the west side of I-75, Henry County Fire Department has determined for seen safety un effectiveness, it would be in the best interest of the county and department to have Station 15 be upgraded to a captain-level station officer. This will provide the west side of Henry County to have a more seasoned officer while creating an opportunity for a fourth battalion in the future. Now there be it resolved that the Henry County Board of Commissioners authorizes the addition of three lieutenant positions for Station 14 and three captain positions for Station 15 in the amount of $560,754 and authorizes the chairman to sign all documents, necessary documents pertaining to this resolution.
Anybody got any comments or questions? I yield the floor to District 5.
My question is, why weren't these positions funded? County Manager, why weren't these positions funded?
Commissioners, this, what was reported to me is they were just an error from the submitting of the documents. When we reviewed it, they're still not there. So you're making up for the difference of the personnel cost. They were not included in the original budget document. So that was a submittal prepared by PD. I'm sorry, FD.
But we knew, we knew we were, we were gonna, we had the fund for these positions, correct?
No, sir. When it's turned in, we looked at by allowing the departments to tell us what the staffing needs are for all of those pieces. It goes back a little bit further than, than that, Commissioner. In, when we first started talking about me being here in a capital improvement plan, you know, we didn't look at staffing. We didn't look at the equipment. We didn't look at the ongoing cost of some of the stations and the facilities we were open. So at this one, it's just another symptom of that. The department turned in their budget and just didn't account for those positions.
Chief, these positions are for the new fire stations?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if these positions are for the new fire station, then we should have known that we would, that we had to fund those positions in, in this year's budget.
Yes, sir.
Let me intercede here because House Bill 554 made the chairman responsible for the budget. So I, I'm directed regardless how we got there, I'm responsible for the budget. And I can attest the fact that I did the budget after, and presented to the board after consultation with the county manager. So the deal was, I didn't know. I mean, it, it didn't bring it up. It wasn't mentioned when I brought it. So, uh, if it's any blame, blame the chairman. I accept full responsibility of it.
Chief Willis, this was just an error in the submittal is how you related to me. Is that correct?
Sir.
The positions were not listed in the request for the budget. It was just not there. Is that correct?
When, when I looked, when I went to Ms. Sarrell to ask her to look at the positions, it was not there.
So the submittal that was provided by the department didn't include those in it. So they weren't reviewed by us. We reviewed the departmental lines. I didn't confirm all those lines. Neither the chairman regarded to the allocation of the new positions on it. We assumed that they were correct. It was just an error in admission.
Yeah, I, I just, I just got this, this feeling in my gut that there's an effort to drain the fund balance. I mean, because every time we come here, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars out of fund balance when we could have just simply budgeted these items and wouldn't have to worry about it. So that's just where I am. I'm not sure where everybody, what everybody else feels, but it just feels, it feels creepy. I'm just going to leave it there.
The only thing I would comment on, back when we started getting splash funds, this was back in the brown shoe days when it first started. One of the first, um, seminars that I attended as another elected official in another place, the first thing that instructor told us, said, let me tell you, you're going to generate more monies than you could ever imagine with a penny. This penny is going to generate more monies than you could ever imagine. Now, you should be very cautious about your capital improvements. Okay, roads is excellent. You go out there and you pave a road, you pay and it's over. Okay, you start building stuff. Okay, if you're not, if you don't have a good program to build in a certain series, you're going to sit there with about three or four fire stations that you got monies left over after you build them, but you have to staff them. Okay, so we was plagued with three fire stations in Splotch Ford. Okay, I was kind of involved in all of it too. I, I never visualized that, uh, we would have basically three fire stations coming online within eighteen months of each other. I, I never visualized that. And we knew that in order to staff it, it would cost us about 1.2 million dollars. So we looking at about 3.6 to staff, uh, three fire stations. Now, during the budget this year, I never visualized that, um, we, we have to staff other stations other than the one on Hampton Los Grove Road now. And I guess the other fire stations are going to come on board in this budget as well too before July the 1st. So, uh, any event, at the end of the day, uh, it's an oversight on my part. I, I didn't look at the other two beyond the one on Hampton Los Grove Road as far as putting it in the budget. So having said that, anybody else have any questions?
Yes, sir.
I yield the floor to District 1.
Thank you, sir. Uh, on, uh, on Station 14, you need three lieutenant positions?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'm going to assume that, uh, you already have three captain positions, correct?
No, sir. I do not have the, um, I, we're, when I looked at the budget, there was no officers budgeted for Station 14 or Station 15. NFPA 1710 requires an officer to be on that unit.
So we need three captains at Station 15, correct?
That's correct. One for each shift.
One for each shift?
Yes, sir.
All the fire departments have three captains at each, at each station?
Each, each station has three officers. At three of our stations, there are three captains. In anticipation of a fourth battalion eventually with the, um, the staffing of these new departments, excuse me, these new fire companies, we will be looking at bringing up a fourth battalion. The captains in this county, in this fire department, are part of that battalion, battalion station. So anticipation of a fourth battalion and the fact that there are only lieutenants on that side of the freeway, I requested that captains be at Station 15 to have more seasoned officers respond on the calls there.
So, uh, we won't have any captains at Station 14?
When Station 14 has a call, Station 15 is, is, will be responding with them for certain calls, for full alarms, uh, responses, and they will have captains on the scene. But at Station 14, the supervisors will be fire lieutenants.
So they'll be kind of traveling captains operating from one station to the other, correct?
Well, they, when they, they, when they respond together, they're on the scene together.
Yep, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I yield the floor to District 4.
Chief, just so I'm clear here, um, the new stations, the annual cost was supposed to be 1.2. Is this on top of the 1.2 or is this just something we didn't capture this last year inside the 1.2?
When I looked at the, uh, the personnel that were funded for Station 14 and Station 15, uh, there were only firefighter paramedic positions funded. So this would be in addition to the funding for those personnel.
So is it addition? What I'm trying to ask is, was that the 1.2 accounting the officers? We just didn't fund them last year? Or this, so this is additional?
This is additional funds. Yes, sir.
So to annually, a station's going to be like 1.4 million?
With this addition. Yes, sir.
The 1.2 was allocated, to my knowledge, for one station. Because we knew that was a known issue. And I, I didn't go, I just couldn't visualize that the significance of two more fire stations or at least one beyond 14 would come in this, in this year's budget. Because we've got, what, eight months left in the budget, so.
Yeah. This is new dollars. These positions were not allocated or presented in the budget. So when the budget proposal came over to us, it does not include that. The 1.2 or a little bit above that, this is new dollars to do that. And yes, it does go through time. That capturing both y'all's concerns. We've already, will be updating that budget. So you'll get to see a part of that in the next couple of weeks as your first draft budget for 18, 19, 20, and 21 now. But these are new dollars we've, that are added because these positions were not presented in the original budget. And Commissioner Holmes, back to the question about the fund balance, we would have paid it either way. So it will reduce the fund balance. I just don't like doing it in the way that we're having to do a lot of the things we're hitting fund balance for right now.
That's what it's for. We, we still got 25%, right?
I understand. It's just.
Okay, I don't see what the problem is.
Well, we, the money would have been the same.
If you're getting a bind, we ought to reduce it to 15%.
I've heard you say that before.
Thank you. You heard me say that before. Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I still have the floor, actually.
I yield the floor, the floor.
Not this particular instance, but Commissioner Holmes said, I, I do have a gut feeling and a fishy feeling that there's been a run made on the, um, fund balance. So I, you know, at this point, I, I would like to just recommend to the board and everybody that we stop getting into fund balance till the new year. And, uh, when we get some new board members on here and let them help us dictate which direction this county goes. Um, again, there's just a lot of expenditures that I see coming up. Uh, they seem to be hitting pretty hard. And Commissioner Holmes hit the nail on the head there. I, it, it doesn't sit well with me. So anyway, that's just my opinion, if you will.
Anybody come answer questions? I yield the floor to District 3.
Ms. Willis.
Uh, when, when do you, uh, think you're going to bring these people on board?
Um, no different than the, uh, the firefighters, paramedics that we're hiring to fill the positions that have been funded. We have them in training. I would like to go ahead and bring them on board now and put them, uh, I'll be rotating them at, with various companies to get their skills up to date and, um, allow them to become seasoned officers before those stations open.
Thank you.
Within to get the captains and those pieces. So it would be the, uh, less senior persons we'd be hiring in and promoting up to try to get us right back to having recruit status and bringing them up through the ranks. So we're not just hiring the captains. We'll be, uh, promoting from within and then backfilling those with existing staff and most likely bringing in on the categories of what the firefighter EMTs would be in our entry levels.
The bottom line is we're still going to spend $560,754.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. New dollars that weren't in.
I, I already assumed we was going to do within before we went without. Yep.
And my motivation, it simply for staffing, 1710, NFPA 1710 recommends that each company shall be led by an officer who, who shall be considered part of the company. And when I reviewed the budget, there were no positions funded.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution to approve Henry County Fire Department to add three lieutenant position for Station 14 and three captain positions for Station 15 and associated budget amendments from fund balance. Somebody want to move in that direction?
Move to three.
Have a motion from District 5. Second from District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor, motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution terminating the contract, uh, HC-16-50 with GALL LLC of Lexington, Kentucky.
Morning Chair, Commissioners.
Morning.
On May 3rd, 2016, Henry County Fire Department presented to the board a resolution to award an annual contract for Fire Department daily wear to GALL's LLC of Lexington, Kentucky. This was approved Resolution 16-112. And currently, GALL's LLC could not provide the uniform and performance asked and expected by the Henry County Fire Department. Whereas GALL's LLC was given a 30-day period to fix all, fix all mistakes to provide Henry County Fire Department with complete orders. GALL's LLC was not able to correct errors, uh, to provide the uniform previously ordered. And whereas Henry County Fire Department would like to terminate contract HC-16-50 with GALL's of Lexington, Kentucky, and have the Board of Commissioners of Henry County terminate the contract, uh, due to poor performance.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
I noticed that the county attorney, uh, uh, signed off on this. Does this mean there'd be no consequence if us terminating this contract?
Well, I don't think there will be any legal consequences to us. But, I mean, somebody might get mad at us, but we don't face any liability because of it.
Okay. Does somebody move, we approve a resolution terminating contract HC-16-50 with GALL LLC of Lexington, Kentucky.
So move.
We have a motion from District 5.
Second.
Second District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Resolution warning bid for the purchase of firefighter daily wear from the Henry County Fire Department. For the Henry County Fire Department.
This resolution is awarding the bid, uh, for the purchase of firefighter daily wear for the Henry County Fire Department. Whereas sealed bids, uh, 17-15 were solicited for the purchase of firefighter daily wear on a renewable contract basis. And whereas one responsive vendor submitted a bid for this purchase as indicated, uh, on the attached bid sheets that you have. TNT Uniform South Incorporated submitted the lowest and most responsive bid for the purchase, uh, for the firefighter daily wear. And whereas funds are available on the fire department account for this commodity, we ask the Board of Commissioners approve this resolution.
Anybody got any questions or comments? If not, have the resolution of the Board of Commissioners award a bid for the purchase of fire, fighter daily wear for the Henry County Fire Department.
So move.
Have a motion District 5.
Second.
Second District 3. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you, gentlemen.
County Manager, Budget Department, Resolution to amend the fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget year-end amendment.
Reconcile the books a little bit, be able to close some things out. Ms. Sarrell's got a report for you. Um, looks like a pretty good year-end statement. Uh, we saved a lot of money last year to put back in fund balance. So we've got, uh, some good news in terms of our audit thus far and the reports, um, forthcoming. Please.
Good morning, Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Before you, you have your budget amendment for the fiscal year-end 2015-16. Um, the reason we do this is show, so we don't show any variances in any revenue or expenditure accounts in all funds. I would like to adjust, uh, the general fund budget in the amount of $170,677. The La Library, $227,222. NSP Grant Fund is $2,658,335. The NSP III Grant Fund is $2,515,232. The CDBG Fund is the grant fund is $501,043. Confiscated asset is $827,874. The Drug Court Program is $71,102. E911 Fund is $295,414. The Grant Fund is $1,544,347. The Special Revenue Fund is $292,151. Technology Fund is $107,753. Special Court Fund is $19,646. Economic Development is $141,477. Uh, let me stop there and explain this one to you all. Uh, as you know, as the audit, we have to record their expenditures from, um, their funds that they spend. So like their bond issuance fund, their donations. So we have to record those on our books. It's not funds that we give the development authority. Um, Hotel Motel Tax Fund is $159,679. The Henry First Fund is $34,974. Capital Asset Fund is 800, I mean, excuse me, $80,594. Impact Fee is $922,512. Debt Service, uh, $928,826. Stormwater, $934,947. And finally, the airport at 263, 263, 027. All of these are increases to the different, uh, funds. And, um, I have with me what was adopted and what was amended, if you would like for me to go into that, if possible.
Anybody have any comments or question? If not, uh, we have a resolution to the Henry County Board of Commissioners to amend the fiscal year 2015, 2016 budget, the year-end amendment. fiscal year twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget, the year-end amendment. Somebody move in that direction?
So move.
Have a motion District Three?
Okay.
Second District One? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you.
Had me worried there for a minute. I didn't know what we was going to do if we didn't pass it. Technological Services, Resolution approving server hardware primary and backup for the new ERP and the public safety system. Mr. Floyd, greetings.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board Members. The item before you will allow technology services to purchase new primary and backup server hardware for the new ERP and public safety solutions and for day-to-day county operations. The servers and storage are mission critical for the county and will be replacing hardware that's coming to the end of life very soon. This solution will provide adequate space for backup and disaster recovery plans, plans for the county. The server hardware will compromise twenty-six blade servers, thirteen primary, and thirteen in the backup site located at this public safety annex. This will be purchased from SPS Services, Strategic Product Services, using state contract number nine 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 SPD dash T two zero, one two zero five zero one dash zero 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 six, in the amount of four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-five cents. The funds are available via budget amendment authorized by Resolution number sixteen dash fifty-six that authorized the transfer of five million dollars to purchase the ERP and public safety solutions. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? How you all the floor, District Four?
Yep, this is not a technical question, but just so everybody's clear and the public's clear, we allocated five million dollars previously for the new ERP, which is the software that the county runs-
Yes, sir.
...and the new public safety software.
Correct.
This is coming out of the five million dollars that we've already allocated-
Already allocated.
...already been there. We know it's there. Okay. I just wanted the public to hear that.
That is Budget Amendment sixteen dash fifty-six.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Any further comments or questions? Have a resolution to approve the server hardware primary and backup for the new ERP and the public safety system. Somebody move in that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Four. Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Resolution to approve the new AS four hundred hardware primary and backup from Dynamix, Dynamix. Yes, sir.
Good morning, again, gentlemen. The item before you will allow technology services to replace the current AS four hundreds that are coming to end of life and must be replaced. The current AS four hundred hardware runs all current ERP, payroll, finance, purchasing, budget, billing department, and most public safety systems at nine one one emergency management and police. The new version of AS four hundred software, hardware will be viable for many years to come. This will provide the necessary AS four hundred hardware primary and backup being purchased from Dynamix IBM reseller using state contract SWC nine zero eight one three in amount of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The funds are available, again, in the budget transfer authorized by Resolution number fifteen dash fifty-six that authorized the transfer of five million dollars to purchase the ERP and public safety solutions. Any questions?
Have a resolution to approve. Anybody got any comments or questions? Have a resolution to approve the new AS four hundred hardware primary and backup? Anybody want to move in that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District Four. Second District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move.
Thank you, sir.
Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, it's important to point out to you now that the stage is set for one of the most significant improvements you've ever done in the IT, IT systems. Last meeting, you approved the capital improvements whereby the environmental control mechanisms within that server room would be replaced for one that you knew failed on us on Monday, and one of you commissioners suggested a DNA check on the drill that put that hole in there. It just worked out that the thing broke and we were able to get it repaired. So the environmental machinery will be taken out of that. Additional power will be bought into the building that will support the building as well as the IT area. And USB backup systems, that's now funded in place. That's underway. You've now just approved these two upgrades that you would have had to do under any scenario under where we go with the ERP and the public safety side. It's the upgrades, it's the increased memories, and it's the things necessary. So the stage is set for us to go on with the next phase of this, and that is to approach the ERP and, and the public safety hardware, um, software applications. I'll be meeting with Commissioner Prince maybe later today, figure out how we're going to take the next steps to get us where we need to be going in whichever direction. But it's another milestone project for you. We've now got everything in set that the IT has been looking for, for about twenty years. And yes, Commissioner, it was funded out of completely appropriation the Board approved earlier this year. So we're not into those dollars. The only difference would have been, and that's why we pulled the other item, was that the other item would have meant to go back to general fund because it was paid out of another part of the ERP solution, that five million. So we'll get that resolved, we'll come back to the Board. But again, Board, you made a significant leap to ensure the reliability and the stability of your IT program, something that's been on the Board's agenda for three or four years now. So congratulations again. Thank you, Skip.
Anybody got any comment? Approval of the minutes, September the nineteenth, twenty sixteen, was a joint meeting with the Library Board, and October the eighteenth, twenty sixteen, was a BLC RUGA meeting. If somebody move, we approve the minutes as published.
So move.
Have a motion District Three? Second District One? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Chairman and Commissioner comments? Chairman has no comments, so last time I started on my left, I'm going to start with District Five.
No comment.
District Three?
No comments.
District One?
No comment.
District Four?
No comment.
County Manager, comments? We amended the budget to add a presentation or an announcement of a no burn in Henry County due to the drought. So I'd like Chief Willis to, under my comments, if Chief Willis would go ahead and bring that to the Board. The chief is recommending, due to drought conditions and the dryness of the county right now, that we pursue and implement a fire ban Henry County-wide. The provisions and the ordinance that does allow her to do this on her fruition. We'd like to bring it back to the Board of County Commissioners, one, let it be in a public use format of the meetings being here. So with that, I'd ask Chief Willis to go ahead and ask the Board's permission to enact this fire ban. Having said that, I yield the floor to the distinguished fire chief.
The fire marshal has been conferring with the forestry department to monitor the conditions, the drought conditions, and as they, they informed him Monday that they're thinking about doing a statewide burn. They have not made a decision yet, but based on the fact that we've had some brush fires as well as a fast-moving fire that started outside of a structure Friday, we're recommending that we have a total ban of all outdoor burning and to be effective immediately. That will include the recreational fires as well, which recreational fires, campfires, and fires in outdoor fireplaces will not be allowed during this time.
I just came up from the East Coast, St. Islands, and you go right through Southeast Georgia, and it is so dry there that the farmers have already cut a fire, a burn in the property that they have because you can see where, I guess, people throw cigarettes. And it just gets on the, that, I, I think we are in the, probably one of the hardest-hit drought areas in the state of Georgia.
According to the map that you've seen-
From the forestry service on it, the northern tier of the county, not quite to McDonough, is what they're referring to as an exceptional risk area, and as about as high as it gets. So we are very mindful of, you know, where our calls would be and what kind of resources would be deployed to drive it. The map drops down a little bit when it gets into the southern part of the county, but in all phases of it, it's showing that we're in a drought condition and we need to be mindful of the fire potentials that we have in the county right now. So I'm supportive of the ban being implemented today as authorized by the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, Board, we advise this ban would not cover the agricultural burn or prescribed burns that Georgia Forestry does, but they have assured me they are not issuing permits for those right now. They still have control over those two type burns.
Anybody got any comments or questions from the Board? How you all the floor, District One?
The people, you know, a lot of people this time of year, they clean their leaves up and they burn them. And a lot of these citizens are not going to know we're under a ban because the ban's lifted in October. What will be the consequences of this?
We're going to, working with Ms. Robinson and Captain Black, we will do a press release. So I'm sure that they will reach out to the, the media to, to ensure that the word is getting out.
Yeah.
The consequences right now, we, we are not writing citations. We will give them a warning on it if they continue to burn. At that time would be the time we would write a citation to them, but it will be a warning. What we do, even during normal burning, we have an engine go out, we advise them of the county ordinance and what Georgia Forestry requires. We ask them to extinguish their fire until they do get a permit. If they continue to be habitual violator, then yes, we will write them a citation.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have you all the floor, District Three?
Ms. Willis, this time of year, a lot of families have cookouts and they have weenie roasts and marshmallows and that sort of thing. Is that covered under this burn ban?
Yes, this is a total ban on burning right now.
Okay.
And big reason is, is this past Friday, it was, or Saturday this weekend, we had a fire up at Stock Bridge that was outside fire. Because of the conditions and all, it spread to four other structures.
Anybody else have any comment?
Okay, thank you so much. That was just for observation. Thank you.
Commissioners, comments today? Want to report to the Board that since you appointed four officers to serve as Henry First Officers, we've had our first meeting, we had our first deposits and our first disbursement for Harland's promotionals for the wheelchair tennis tournaments is coming up. He's got some promotional caps he used. We're, got a couple of business things that we want to report back to the Board so that we can set up a way you can see what money goes in and what goes out on a regular report basis. So you gave us that, and we're well underway with operating that in accordance with your instructions. I'm really pleased to tell you that last week I had the occasion to participate in the site surveys with the court systems facility assessment contractors. It revealed a lot, and it was a series of meetings with all the staff members who were a part of the judiciary, judiciary, and certainly an opportunity to sit down with the judges in two days. Obviously, we have a lot to do and work before we'll come back or have the joint meeting, which has to occur between the judiciary and the Board of County Commissioners as the team's, the team's initiatives, if you will. But the other side of that is that we learned a lot that we can do immediately, and some improvements that I, we're proposing that we start taking advantage of that hopefully reduce the costs of our judiciary and improve public safety's safety. And those two, we're talking about having first arraignment, I'm sorry, arraignment and first appearances held at the county jail, as opposed to right now where the requirement is for the sheriff and his facilities to transport fifty, seventy, whatever the number of inmates necessary to go to the McDonough, to the courthouse, line them up there, have the bailiffs handle them, and do that in first appearance at the courthouse. Under this proposal, we've got the IT infrastructure, the, meaning the cabling and the linking in place, to go ahead and do that right at the jail. All the judges, Supreme Court, State Court, magistrate court, were supportive and asking us to go forward on this. There is going to be a software applications that we'll put in it, but we'll distribute those costs across the public safety in any part that we need on the capital side. The other one which is a little bit different, but also had the affirm of all the judges, was we want to move to a software and the ability for the magistrate judge or any of the judges to be able to electronically produce and transmit search warrants and all the warrants that they do, which requires a judge to show up someplace, hear a report, sign a document. So taking away those instantaneous, or taking those timeframes out and getting it to an instantaneous mode is really something law enforcement around the nation has been pursuing. I've used it in the past, and it was very beneficial from a time perspective to be able to have a judge sitting there at home, hit, read the documents and hit the button and transmit a warrant that's valid in court for an arrest or a search. So good information that came out, externalities from the meeting with the judges. Obviously, the court facilities assessment is going to be a long program. We'll be updating you on our updates, I'm sorry, of our initiatives as we're going forward because consultants will be back in about four weeks for another visit, and about that time is when we'll be starting to schedule the Board of County Commissioners and the judiciary to have a meeting together. Yesterday, and for the next few days, the Board is aware that we are in negotiations with a Microsoft vendor on the number of licensures and a bill for licensure and true-up that occurred in the past that we haven't accounted for. Right now, the posture is that we'd be somewhere in a total payout this year of about eight hundred thousand dollars for licensure and all these true-up cost. Next year, it'd be about three hundred thousand and some dollars as we go forward in a three-year commitment. We only budgeted two hundred thousand because there was no expectation, there was no knowledge of the true-up requirements across the licensure for the last seven years. Microsoft came to us and asked to do an internal audit of our, across our electronic devices. They did so, and the next we heard was, here's the amount of money that we owe, and here's how you could pay it. In looking further into it, the issues are pretty straightforward. Yes, the county has, did not apply or forward the yearly announcements that's required to be sent to them in a report saying, here are the number of server licensures we've been utilizing, and here's where they're at. And as such, when we didn't do that, they're saying that we owed them some licensures in the past, but they're looking at only year three of the year agreement that has expired. And if it's sounding complicated, it's only going to get worse. We didn't turn in the reports. However, we were under a management arrangement and what I would say an oversight arrangement with a Microsoft sales representative that never told us that we were doing anything or we were populating costs that we weren't aware of. So for seven years, we've been using a licensure across our system that now Microsoft wants to have some reimbursement towards. Now, they have cut us some slack, and their recommendation is that the first three years aren't accounted for, but the next three years, including the year-end true-up, is accounted for in a five hundred and eight thousand dollar true-up cost for licensure and a three hundred and eighty-some thousand dollar going-forward true-up payment. All that said, is that going back and we're looking at the financial options they gave it, I made a commitment to them to meet with them later in the week if I can get the financial package, so we can make a determination what's available from the bank as opposed to financing with Microsoft, and to look for some relief. Frankly, Commissioners, the, the question is that was there an obligation on our part to turn in those reports? Yes, there was. In my opinion, was there an obligation on the sales representative's part to make sure that we were configured in the most efficient way we could? So I think there's some relief that should be due there, and that's what the discussion will turn to next. Right now, staff is working on reconfiguring our data farm such that we can look at the data and the configuration that we should have had seven years ago and what that cost would have been coming through time. When that's done, then I'll have some other criteria, but I've got to thank staff for putting these very complicated programs together and working with me to try to come to a resolve. The bottom line is, right now, that we've got outstanding arrears with Microsoft. It's significant dollars, and I'm trying to work out a solution with them so that I can involve the attorney, and we'll get an agreement that's binding, confidential if it's necessary, and we resolve this issue as soon as possible. That's all I have for the Board of County Commissioners. Remind you that we're going to be at a groundbreaking at the airport here shortly, and because y'all wanted to drive, transportation is no longer going to come pick you up. If any questions for the Board of County Commissioners, I'm here and available.
Anybody got any questions or comments? How you all the floor, District Four?
Thank you, Chairman. Station Eight?
Yes, sir. I've got an update from Hutch this morning. By the way, Hutch is out on a personal family emergency, so we'll keep him in our prayers. Good news. We finished the permitting aspect of the work that's there for the demolition. The utilities have been disconnected, and as we speak, I think that DOT crews out there are actually demolishing the single-family residence that was on the site. We've also made arrangements for the acquisition of the apparatus building and the slab contractor that that apparatus building was step on. And remember that the apparatus building has to have a unique slab because of the weighted equipment that's going in there. As I understand it, Chief Willis and her staff are working on the personnel-
As I understand it, Chief Willis and her staff are working on the personnel building, remember, these are modular buildings, working on that configuration, and I understand the contractor's waiting for that piece, so we're moving along. We've made really good progress on it, but the dumpsters go out there, and everything that was remaining about the single-family house should be gone by Thursday, and then we'll have our contractor come in about how to locate the next piece. The site plan is working out, it was intended. We're probably about a month, maybe a little bit longer out, once the delivery of the building's established, we might be able to compress that time, but we're working on it to expedite everything we can here, Commissioner Prince.
Sure. Chief, I might recommend, when you're looking at the housing for the firefighters, maybe looking at having two individual units, you know, a day-use unit, because if they're modular, they will move, and I just hate to think somebody cooking while somebody's trying to sleep and the whole thing moving. So you might look at having, you know, a housing area for sleep and then maybe an additional area somewhere else for cooking and the daytime activities. Just, it's all, you know, you know what you're looking for, but just recommendation from.
We'll get you some pictures of it when the layout's, because it's got to come back for the purchase of it, and we've been authorized for the dollars, but I'll get you the information as we're going forward, what we're actually getting in place. Any other comments or question? County Attorney, you have any?
No, sir.
There are coming meetings and events, November the fifteenth at six thirty PM is a regular meeting, December the sixth at nine o'clock AM is a regular meeting, executive session. I know we have a personnel issue. I think we have some right-of-way acquisition.
We have right-of-way acquisition and disposal.
And a what?
And a right-of-way disposal. We're getting rid of some right-of-way, y'all can discuss that in executive session.
How about potential litigation?
No potential litigation.
No potential litigation, okay.
And only one personnel issue from the County Manager.
Okay. Does somebody move, we adjourn into executive session? I yield a floor before moving that direction. Okay, just as long as you say personnel, it doesn't matter. As long as you've got personnel, you can have six or seven or eight, or you can have one. If you're talking about litigation, you can have one. If you're talking about acquisition of real estate, like we normally do, we only say we're going back there and we approve six or seven, eight right-of-way. I yield a floor to District three.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District three. Second from District one, any further discussion, all opposed. We're now going into executive session. We could be back here fifteen minutes or fifteen hours. Thank you.